Okay, good morning everyone. Welcome to Mark's Public Joint Commissioning Committee between Sheffield City Council and Sheffield Clinical Commissioning Group. I'm Terry Hudson, I'm the Chair of Sheffield CCG and co-chair this Joint Committee for Health and Social Care with my colleague George Linders-Hammond. So, we have apologies for absence this morning from Alison Teal. Are there any further apologies that we should be aware of? No, okay, thank you. So take us on to item three, which is to consider any items that may be moved where the public or press need to be excluded. Looking through the agenda, there are no items that we shouldn't be discussing openly in public this morning. So I'll take us to item four, declarations of interest. Does anybody have a declaration of interest in any of today's agenda items they wish to declare? Mark, please.
Right, yeah, thank, bloody hell. Thanks Chair. I'm Mark Gamsu, lay member on Sheffield Clinical Commissioning Group. Item nine, sorry, item eight, resilient communities. That discussion about communities, I just wanted to declare that I'm a trustee of Darnell Wellbeing.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Having read the paper in advance, I don't think there's any particular reason that we would need to exclude you from the discussion, but thank you for declaring that item for us. I'll take us to item number five. So these are minutes of the previous meeting that were held in a public forum, actually way back in February 2021. So I recognise that several members of the committee today weren't part of the committee at that point, but several of you were. I don't propose that we go through the minutes with a great level of scrutiny because they have been signed off in development and strategy sessions of the committee. However, we will take them just page by page for any points of inaccuracy. And I think they're particularly helpful set of minutes for framing today's discussion. There's certainly some points within those minutes, particularly with respect to the development of the Joint Commissioning Committee and with respect to the Joint Commissioning Plan, which is now a year on. So hopefully we'll be able to discuss some of the progress that's been made. So I'll take those page by page. If there's any inaccuracies or any points that anybody wishes to draw out, if you could just raise your hand for me. So pages one and two, pages three and four, and then finally page five. Okay, so we'll take those as an accurate reflection of the previous meeting. So take us now to item number six on the agenda this morning, which is the ICB transition and the structure of the Joint Committee moving forward. And I'm going to hand over to Sandy Bucken. Is Alexis due to join us for this item?
Oh, it's just me Chair, thank you.
Just you, okay, away you go, thank you.
Thank you. So could I ask for the presentation to be... Thank you. So my name is Sandy Bucken, I'm Director of Commission Development for Sheffield CCG, and I'm presenting today an update on the South Yorkshire Integrated Care Board and what this means for the Joint Commissioning Committee going forward. So in July last year, the government published the Health and Care Bill, setting out the legislative proposals to reform the delivery and organisation of health services in England. And the aim was to promote a more joined up services and to ensure more of a focus on improving health rather than simply providing healthcare services. So the main points of the bill to be noted are that clinical commissioning groups will be abolished, integrated care systems will be created with the establishment of an integrated care board, and the integrated care boards will be responsible for bringing together a wider set of system partners to develop a plan to address that broader health, public health and social care needs of the local population. So they were the main points in terms of the bill. Go on to the next slide please. So it's expected that if passed by law, the Act will take effect from the first of July this year and the South Yorkshire ICB will be established. The local NHS arrangements are yet to be agreed, however, there is joint commitment to continue with existing arrangements. And this has been passed and approved through Sheffield City Council's Cooperative Executive Committee and the CCG's governing body. And those existing arrangements are in relation to the proposal for the financial decision making on behalf of the ICB in the future to be delegated to an ICB executive director for Sheffield. That role will be, as it is now with the governing body members for the Sheffield CCG, it is envisaged that that role will be a voting member on the ICB as well as a member of the Sheffield Health and Care Partnership Forum, which that will act as a collaborative forum as described in option one of the Thriving Places Guidance, which we have brought here before. The local arrangements also at the moment exist of the section 75 agreement and the pooled budget. That will continue and the Joint Commissioning Committee will remain in place with obviously revised terms of reference to reflect the newly established ICB and with representatives as we are now with from both organisations. The Joint Commissioning Committee will continue to provide strategic and financial oversight of the Better Care Fund Programme, the wider section 75 agreement, which I've just touched upon, the pooled budget and place-based arrangements aligned to the Sheffield Health and Wellbeing Outcomes and Strategic Frameworks. So there's a lot of integrating the new ICB into the terms of reference, but very much staying in line with what we've got in existing arrangements. So in relation to the Joint Commissioning Committee, so just to give a bit of history behind it, so in 2015 Sheffield CCG and Sheffield City Council established a pooled fund and related section 75 agreement that enabled and supported the integration of health and social care services and governance in relation to the National Better Care Fund Programme. Sheffield is one of the leading cities in this national programme and agreeing to a pooled budget of over £272 million in 2016-17, over £400 million in 21-22, and now around £750 million in 22-23. And we are now the leading city with this amount in the pooled budget. This has led to shared commissioning arrangements, positive joint work in between health and social care and collaboration within Sheffield. And in March 2019, the committee as we are now was created to oversee that section 75 agreement to give shared local accountability and shape the development of joint health and care commissioning. The committee itself supports the work of the Health and Wellbeing Board, so there is alignment in terms of delivery of the Sheffield objectives to maintain the focus on prevention and activity that aims to keep people living independent, healthy and active lives through. Having that single commissioning voice between the two organisations, owning a single commissioning plan for Sheffield, ensuring the new models of care delivered the outcomes required for the Sheffield population, and build on the Better Care Fund and section 75 agreement to drive forward change as we have now seen in terms of agreeing a much more substantial amount. So that now continues. Last year was the first time we had the first Sheffield Joint Health and Social Care Commissioning Plan. This year we've continued and drafted the 22-23 Commissioning Plan, which will be coming to committee in the future. And that is now underpinned by a Sheffield-wide outcomes report, which is overseen by an outcomes steering board in which members from this committee as well as partners from voluntary organisations and the Sheffield Health and Well partnership are part of. So we are currently revising the governance arrangements with the new changes. But as stated within the presentation, we want to continue the existing arrangements. So that's all I wanted to share in terms of an update for today. And if anyone's got any questions.
Thank you, Sandy. So are there any questions or comments? George, please.
Thank you Chair, and thanks Sandy, that was really helpful. I wonder if you could say a little bit more about what the process has been and how the process will change going forward with the ICB in terms specifically of that sign-off that you talked through, those amounts that have been in the Better Care Fund and under the purview of the Joint Commissioning Committee. I wonder if you could explain how those amounts have been agreed until now between locally and nationally, and how that will change, you know, presuming that this July the Health and Care Act is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there's a presentation coming up around the pooled budget and section 75.
To, you know, put those questions into that section if that is more helpful. Thank you, George. Mark, please.
Yeah, thanks Andy. It's, what I just want to, I don't completely understand is the, how we ensure that the accountability and connections that the current membership of this committee has. So for example, we have a GP voice, we have a lay member voice, as well as officers. Now, from what I heard you say, there'll be a voting member from the ICB, and I can't remember the other one, oh, from the Sheffield Provider Partnership representation. At the moment, I think we have four in effect NHS representatives on this committee. And I'm just wondering how the discussion going forward is going to ensure that we have that sort of diversity and where we are with that discussion.
So yeah, thanks for that, Mark. In terms of the governance around this committee, we're still going through those. We would absolutely want to ensure we've got the voices and the opinions and views that we've got currently. In how that is structured, we need to be looking at how we can set that up in the new team and new organisation from the ICB. So that hasn't been established yet. What the agreement has been through, the papers that have gone to the Cooperative Exec and the Council and governing body and CCG, is the point of delegation from the ICB coming into the committee rather than the rest of the membership in the committee from the health perspective. That is something that we're currently working up at the moment and will come back to the committee for further confirmation as we revise the terms of reference.
Thank you for asking the question, Mark. I think it is a pertinent development point for the committee moving forwards as we head towards July to carefully consider membership with our ICB, but also more importantly with our Sheffield team and our partners in the local authority. Kate, please.
Thank you Chair. Just to add to the whole thing about governance and structural change and so on, the council's agreed its approach to governance by committee, starting from next year. We had a special meeting on that. And JCC is one of the bodies obviously that will make sure that we have appropriate representation from, well, it'll be more than one of the committees I would have thought, so I just thought I would contribute that bit of change to this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Jackie, please.
I think it is just worth recognising, given that the bill is still going through Parliament, the amount of time between now and the expected target date for establishment of the ICB arrangements means we're working to very short timescales with lots of uncertainty. So I think we do need to recognise that it will take some time to get some of these arrangements confirmed. But it's a delicate timing of when the legislation's passed and when we're expected to enact these new arrangements from the NHS side. And recognising the council is changing its structures as well. So I think there's still quite a lot for us to work through in this committee.
Thank you, Jackie. Does anybody else want to come in on this item? So I think as we consider that membership moving forwards, I can remember when the committee was first formed, we perhaps had a view that there should be equal numbers of this type of person and this type of professional group. And I think as we've progressed through the committee over the last few years, the audience, if you like, the people in attendance has broadened. There is something for us to think about as we move into new working arrangements, about the value that different professional groups add to the discussion and certainly factor that into our decision-making around the terms of reference in future. Okay, thank you Sandy for giving us that update, and I'm sure we'll hear about that more in due course. I'm going to take us now to item number seven, which is the Better Care Fund Budget and the section 75 budget. And I'm going to hand over to Jackie Mills, please.
Thank you, Terry. Are we all right to get the, if we can move on to the second slide?
So like Sandy, I thought I'd take the opportunity to do a bit of reflection on where we have come to from and where we are heading to. So I just wanted to remind the committee that the starting point of the Joint Commissioning Committee was set around the Better Care Fund. So the national context of the Better Care Fund is to reduce the barriers that are often created by having separate funding streams for services and by bringing funding together, the expectation that we can plan services on a more integrated basis. And the expectation is that the Better Care Fund pools together funding under a section 75 agreement, and I'll come on to in a moment some of the terminology. So nationally, there is an expectation that each health and care community sets a minimum level of pooled budget. So for Sheffield, this would equate to around £81 million as the minimum that we should be pooling. And that's made up of the elements I've set out in this presentation. So a minimum contribution from the CCG, the funding that the council receives for the disabled facilities grant, some additional social care funding that was announced a number of years ago, and the winter pressures grant funding. So that is the minimum that we would expect to pool. But as Sandy has already alluded to, in Sheffield, we expect to, we have traditionally done more than that. Can we just move on to the next slide? And again, just making sure we're clear in terms of our terminology, I've just set out there what a section 75 agreement is. So it's a section of the NHS Act that allows NHS bodies and councils to pool their funding into a common fund to commission helpful social care-related services. And that's important that we keep coming back to, you know, section 75 is the specific vehicle that allows us to put that funding together. So I thought it was worth rehearsing that. If we can just move on. So Sandy outlined in her presentation, I've set out here the fact that ever since we've started with the Better Care Fund, the budget in Sheffield has been way in excess of the minimum contribution. And that's because we set out by agreeing what our joint priorities should be, and we have amended and shaped those priorities as we've gone through the years. Sandy reminded us that we have a set of joint commissioning intentions that we agreed for 2021-22, and we've been doing work over a period of time to look at how we would align our budgets around the whole of those commissioning intentions. And that culminated in the proposal to the CCG governing body and the council's cooperative executive to extend the scope of the section 75 agreement to around £750 million for 22-23. And I think that is testament to all the areas that we feel we can jointly work on as a set of partners. Really, one of the main expansions is to look at how we work together around children's services as well as adults going forward. So if we just move on, so I just wanted to give us a summary of where we are at in 2021-22. So the Better Care Fund and the section 75 agreement for 21-22 was signed off via the Health and Wellbeing Board and was enacted at the end of January. It sets out the agreed budgets in scope, how we have a set of risk-sharing arrangements, and how we govern our decision-making. And as I've said, the proposal to expand the scope of the joint commissioning budget was approved recently, so we will look to enact that through the next version of the section 75 agreement. I do want to note that for 21-22, the budgets that we are jointly managing have been supported by additional non-recurring funding that have been linked to the management of the pandemic. So we've had some quite significant additional funding in the current financial year, which will end at the end of March, and I'll come on to later in the presentation about what that could mean for us. But despite that additional funding, we have seen significant budgetary pressures both for the council and the CCG in 2021, particularly in relation to ongoing care, which is our adult social care and our continuing healthcare budget. So in the next slide, I have just set out the current financial position for the joint pooled budgets, which shows a forecast overspend of £17 million. So whilst that has been managed jointly within the CCG's and the council's financial position, it is a significant pressure and will move forward into 2022-23 with both the council having a financial recovery programme and the CCG equally having an efficiency programme to manage that pressure. And then if we just move on to the next slide, I just wanted to pull out in more detail some of the non-recurrent funding and how that has been used in the current year. So in 2021, we've had access to a forecast of just under £11 million, which has been used to support smoother discharges and packages of care for people being discharged from hospital. So this funding will end at the end of March and it's been factored, the end of this funding's been factored into our financial projections for the coming year. But I've set out there how that funding has been used. And then in the following slide, I've also noticed some other non-recurrent funding that we have jointly worked on in terms of utilisation. So we had a joint winter plan to make sure that we had additional services ramped up to manage pressures over the winter period. And members will remember, you know, winter coincided with the Omicron variant of the Covid virus, so it was a particularly challenging winter, so we had a plan to manage that. We also received some additional non-recurrent funding from the South Yorkshire Battle Law ICS, which we use to support discharge beds, but also looking at supplementing some of the work we were already doing with the care sector on recruitment and retention. We've had the workforce grant that's been utilised to support the Care Friends App and the payment to providers for support. And then we've had some primary care winter access funding that's been used to support practice resilience and commission additional capacity in primary care. So all that funding, which was very welcome in 21-22, we are now working through how we either take out that support because it's no longer needed, or how we mainstream that funding going forward. But I think it is important to note that it's a significant level of challenge for us as a set of partners. So that's the main bits I want to cover in the presentation. I'm just wondering if I pause there and then we'll talk about the future arrangements around delegation and where we're at with that, picking up George's question, if that's okay?
Thank you, Jackie. So any questions or comments? Lee, please.
Hi, yes, I'm Lee Sawesby, a GP, sits on the CCG governing body. Just got two questions, Jackie, just for clarification really. When, I don't know if it's possible to go back to the presentation, when we were looking at the overspend on, so the slide before that, two before that? That one. And so the biggest overspend there looks like it's on ongoing care. So is that, just so I understand, so we all understand, is that sort of the care in people's homes, social support, that sort of daily, day-to-day care?
Yes, it is. So it's the adult social care budget, so the packages that the council purchases on behalf of people, and then ongoing, continuing healthcare funding as well.
Okay, so leading on from that, when we look at the next slide, I think, looked at the £11 million overspend from non-recurrent, not overspend, the £11 million non-recurrent funding that was supporting discharges from hospital. So obviously if that goes, it strikes me that there's an extra burden on that overspend, and also an extra burden on the hospitals and secondary care, because obviously that £11 million is enabling people to be discharged and free up beds for next people to come in. So where are we with the discussions about both of those? So one, in terms of how we're going to manage the overspend on ongoing care? And how, and what are our conversations with secondary care in terms of losing the non-recurrent funding to support them, because obviously that's got an impact on them? So I suppose the question is, how are we getting on with our, talking to our partners, looking at the new landscape and how we're going to manage it?
Yeah, so what we, what the CCG and the council have done is forecast forward into 22-23 the loss of that funding and what that means for setting budgets. But for both organisations, that means there's a significant level of financial challenge that we need to address. So there is an expectation that a lot of that spend will have to continue because it's funding based, like services. So we're looking at other efficiency savings. But equally, in terms of the conversations with partners, Sandy, it's currently as part of her role, having active conversations about how we address the ongoing pressures in terms of flow through the hospitals, keeping that going, and making sure we've got an efficient system as possible. So we still know that people circulate around the system where they don't get interventions at the right stage. So we're trying to make sure that that system works better so that people are actively managed and case managed so that they get the best care, but that we don't have people needlessly, you know, being remitted back to hospital because they didn't get the right care at the right point.
I suppose my underlying question is, is my underlying question is, is there any appetite from the secondary care sector to invest in social care? I'm just mindful of, those are really helpful graphs to see how much money has gone into the section 75, and we're aware of it and we know it. But actually, it's setting a culture, isn't it, of breaking down these artificial barriers for the good of the person who needs the care. That's what matters, you know, so putting in nine times the minimum speaks volumes really about the direction we want to go in Sheffield. And is there, is there an understanding of the benefits of that from other partners? Because actually, you know, if we spend our money different across the whole patch, including from secondary care, you know, that unthinkable of secondary care investing in the voluntary sector, for example, or, you know, just different ways of working, are you hopeful that in the new landscape actually there'll be an understanding and an appetite for that? Because I'm just thinking, you know, actually we could invest either way, couldn't we? We could invest in really expensive, high-end hospital treatment, or we could invest in relatively cheap but hugely impactful and effective voluntary sector, you know? And I think increasingly, we're trying to imagine a new way of working, aren't we? And I suppose I'm just trying to get a feel for what the appetite is for different ways of working.
So I think I'd say I'm very hopeful that people understand the interrelationships far better than a number of years ago. So people having more joined-up conversations about what we can do better together. I think I wouldn't underestimate the challenge that individual organisations each have financially and the risks that that poses for organisations to then focus internally about their own positions and could potentially retrench. So I think there's still quite a significant piece of work to do to look at how we together find solutions rather than everybody independently doing that. And I think the council in particular has been a leader in this. So in terms of, certainly the planning started far earlier than in the NHS because there was more certainty around the potential financial problems, and has reached out and shared really widely the potential implications and working with partners to work through what some of those solutions might be. So I think I would hope that the lead the council has given. So I think I would hope that the lead the council has given would allow other organisations to follow in similar suit.
Because, because I think that's our challenge, isn't it? If you think of Sheffield as a place, it's to truly understand that actually we're all interdependent. And I just wonder what the role of this committee is in terms of setting the tone and the leadership, I suppose, across the patch to give people confidence to do things differently.
Thank you. Can I bring in Sandy?
I just wanted to touch on that, the collaborative integrated working, which is what you're really describing with across partners in Sheffield, is the one main aim to the ICB. So as we progress in shadow form over the next three months, and then when the bill does land, we would expect, you know, the hope is actually that is what is developed, both at a system, South Yorkshire level, as well as Sheffield. But as Jackie said, I've been working quite closely with our providers and partners across Sheffield to really face the problems together. And there has been a very collaborative integrated approach that we've taken over the last few months, and especially during Covid, so it's, Covid has really emphasised that partnership, collaborative working that we need to embed going forward.
Thank you, Lee. Just before I bring you in, Kate, I'm just going to supplement Lee's question, so I apologise, Jackie. But given that this is a public meeting, I think I don't want to leave any ambiguity over the, the funding to help people be discharged from hospital. So for clarity, can I ask, is that additional funding? And there's ongoing baseline funding to support discharge from hospital in our programme? Or is it something else? So I just wanted to clarify that because I don't want us to be left in a position when we leave the committee where we've left the impression that there's no support for hospital discharge at all.
Yeah, so the, the funding that we require to support people coming out of hospital has been factored into both the CCG and the council's budget, so that will be there. But we, it leaves us with a financial challenge that we both need to resolve, and there are a number of programmes that have been put in place to manage that.
Thank you, Jackie. Kate, can I bring you in now, please? Thank you.
Thank you. I do appreciate that this winter we had Omicron and standard winter, well, ever standard is, winter pressure, other winter pressures as well. And I've got two questions on that, Jackie, be helpful to get some feedback from you. Firstly is, the whole thing about temporary funding, year on year, and how easy stroke difficult is that to manage on that basis? And the second question, which is linked to that, is even using, having to use temporary funding, does it give an opportunity to identify any innovation which could be fed into mainstream? And are there any examples of that? Sorry, there's three questions there, that's what people usually do to me, I do apologise.
Yeah, and sorry, so I'll go in reverse and you might have to remind me what the first one was. So, yes, problems with having non recurrent funding and non recurrent funding that is allocated partway through the year does cause us challenge for making sure we spend it to deliver the best value. I think we have really done well in terms of engaging lots of different partners in terms of how we might make best use of that. And we have managed to solve some fairly difficult, urgent challenges that were there. So I think we knew what the problems were, so it was quite easy to decide where the priorities were for putting that non recurrent funding. So members will be aware, in particular, we've had a challenge around recruitment and retention in our domiciliary care providers, so there's been a lot of focus about what we can do with those providers. And joking, talking more detail about the forums that we've had for engaging the providers and agreeing with them how best utilise that funding. I think there have been some really good examples of how we've used that money, but in particular how that's then managed to build those networks of trust and engaging people to come forward and be part of the solution, as opposed to feeling isolated and not knowing really how to respond to some of the challenges they have. I think, I touched on it slightly in the last slide, we did some work quite actively with our care providers around if we brought forward some of the national living wage that we knew was coming in from April, that might help them in terms of being able to retain and reward staff who had worked really hard over that period. And I think that that has had some lasting benefits going forward. So Jo, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Yes, thank you, Jackie, yeah. That's, I think, when I look back sort of three years, four years, the, you know, the change systemically with regards to understanding home care as part of, as a critical part of the system has, you know, has been significant. I think one of the challenges though is the, is the, the temporary nature of funding, the difficulty to anticipate that. So it was fantastic that we had that money, that we were able to encourage providers to pay the new minimum wage ahead of, ahead of it being a legal requirement. I think, you know, we are, have been very clear with NHS England and with, and with government that actually what we need is more funding ongoing so that we can commit to improve terms and conditions. It's not just the pay rate, but it's the, you know, the, the annual leave, the sick pay, et cetera, and being able to be paid by shift rather than by minutes. That's the change we want to make. We've got a large and ambitious home care transformation programme, which really will be successful when it works as part of a collaborative system. So there's a huge amount of work going into that. And we have had forums, for example, where care providers met with teaching hospital staff and with CCG colleagues and, you know, kind of shared the experience really. And I think that, that really has opened people's eyes perhaps to what it, what it is to be a care worker, how difficult and challenging that is. So I, you know, I feel like that we've made huge progress. The challenge for us now is to build on that and not let, as Jackie said, you know, the, our respective budget positions sort of, yeah, retrench us back into thinking, you know, of our, just of ourselves. We have to keep that system leadership open really and, yeah, and face the challenges together.
And just another example is, we've worked quite actively with the voluntary and community sector over the Covid period, and they have been instrumental in supporting us reaching out to communities. And one of the things we have been able to do with the non recurrent funding is give grants out over a range of programmes to our voluntary sector organisations, which again hopefully puts them in a position where they can continue to provide that interface between our communities and our statutory organisations. So, sorry, Kate, have I covered all the questions?
The second bit of the question, main bit really, was about any learning around sort of innovation. We've talked a bit about generic stuff really, but I just wondered whether there was anything that is now actively going to be part of mainstream budgets and funding as a result of what we've learned through using the temporary funding?
I think that is part of our real challenge, as Jo said, actually finding funding to mainstream. So where we've been able to bolster up, say, voluntary sector reserves, that hopefully will play out over a long period of time. I think the lasting benefit is probably more around the relationships, the setting up of forums so that people don't feel they're working in isolation. So we have a care home forum that St Luke's provide facilitation for, that will continue over the longer term, and that brings together all our care home providers to, you know, share what their problems are, talk to each other about the solutions that different people have tried, just create that network of support, as I say, so they don't feel as isolated. The other thing I think is, is being clear about where our particular challenges are. So it was Alexis Chapel who was really instrumental in lobbying within the ICS to, to receive the funding coming into Sheffield. So we received over five million pounds worth of funding because Alexis was really clear and had evidence around some of the challenges. So I think it's, it's being on the front foot, being able to articulate and influence people to understand those challenges. So I think that's probably the thing we have learnt the most about how you influence, rather than this, yeah, suddenly we've set up a new service that will continue.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you. Can I bring Jo in, please?
Yes, I should, I can name some more specific innovations as well. So Jackie referenced the Care Friends app, which we are currently piloting at a reasonable scale really with a number of our home care providers and some care homes. That enables individual workers to refer friends, and a successful referral, you know, has a reward for them, but it can be used much more extensively actually, as a way of rewarding timeliness, taking extra shifts, et cetera. But we have also commissioned Headspace, who run the kind of meditation app, and they are really interested in collaborating with Care Friends to bring together, you know, sort of reward and, and, and self care, really. So that, that's a really interesting possibility, and we've had really positive feedback from a lot of that. And I suppose there have been other ways of working that have changed, so, you know, sort of shared escalation calls, working, you know, enhancing our care home brokerage team, working probably more collaboratively than we ever have with, with colleagues, you know, across the system. And I think that's significant. We introduced a phone line for home care workers, home care providers to contact a GP and be able to speak to somebody, to a medical professional about any concerns they had about people that they were visiting and supporting. That has been incredibly well received because if nothing else, it, it's a signal to home care workers that they are, they have a part to play and that they are not on their own, because otherwise it is a fairly solitary and challenging role. And we've got some really interesting pilot projects as well around the city in working, you know, home care in a different way. So we've got a controlled implementation of a new model of home care, which, you know, I think is really exciting, where we will be paying differently, we will be integrating the home care in the, in a community setting, links to the GP, links to district nursing. And actually, I think that, that's where this, this gets quite exciting. I think the other, the other bit for us to think about, and which is, will be part of my role, so I should have introduced myself, sorry. Jo Horrigan, Director of Integrated Commissioning at Sheffield City Council, I work closely with Alexis Chapel, the Director of Health and Adult Social Care. The, the other, the other trick for us, I think, is to get to grips with and understand how we can best leverage levelling up investment in the city in such a way as to, to bolster the community capacity and the social capital in the city and the areas where we need that most. Because actually, that will really help with the wider health and care system. As you, as you've said, you know, we have a real, there's huge potential for communities to look after themselves and one another, to relieve pressure on the wider system and much better outcomes for, for people. So I think that's the other, the other interesting area for us to, to get into now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jo. Mark, please.
Thanks, Chair. I was going to hang fire until the community's discussion, but I think in terms of what Jo's talking about, what strikes me is, and following on from Lee's questions, is that it's really difficult for us to, I don't think we've managed it yet, which is to describe a framework that says, this is, is how we see and understand, in particular the contribution of the voluntary and community sector, so that, and then to get a feeling about, well, how should we, how and where should we be resourcing it in order to move forward? And the thing that worries me, I've picked this up and I noticed that Sarah Burt has just joined the meeting, is there's a lot of expectation coming from NHS England around things like virtual wards, as being seen as part of, as an important contributor to some of the challenges that Lee identified, or not contributed as a way of ameliorating those. And I'm concerned that while on the surface, things like that appear as, oh, great, this is more moving services to community, which of course it is, but nonetheless, it's still working in the sort of paradigm of this is, is, of, this is a challenge faced by the hospital sector and it's about moving clinical services out into the community without thinking about the assets and strengths the community has. And I also think that some of the risks associated with that is that it actually has risks actually exacerbating health inequalities. Because, just simply because for many people, they might be living in poor quality housing, on low incomes, and the idea of living in a virtual ward in Darnall or Tinsley might be very different, different to living in a virtual ward in Fullwood. So I, I'm not arguing that we get into the detail of all of those things, but what I am saying is the challenge for this committee, I think, is starting to develop a frame, and hopefully once we start talking with Sarah about her right and around communities, to better be, to be clearer about the contribution that the voluntary and community sector and communities can make, and make sure that we see that and are able to compare that about it to other investments that we're making into traditional clinical approaches to services.
Thank you, Mark. I think there's an important point there as we think about innovation, reflecting back on Kate's question, is that it can't be innovation of a model in isolation, it's about transformation, as opposed to just, you know, having outreach services in community. So they really have got to integrate in with those community assets. And I think we've got to be quite clear on what, what the outcomes are that we would be hoping for, Mark. So I think the suggestion of a framework is something that we might want to consider in due course. I can see Jo nodding away there, so that's, there's a discussion for you to have afterwards, isn't there? Thank you. Okay, any further questions on the Better Care Fund budget from anybody? Jackie, please.
Can I just pick up George's point around future, where we're going to in the future in terms of financial delegation? And I think, as, as we said earlier, there's still a lot of uncertainty and movement that we need to make. I think what, no, what we have done is set out to the new incoming designate ICB leaders is that we have really firm foundations in Sheffield using our joint commissioning committee and our section seventy five agreement. I think the agreement of the cooperative executive and the CCG governing body around the budgets that support our joint commissioning intentions, and having that as this, the starting point for a discussion around delegation is really key. And the feedback we have had is that that has been accepted as, as a credible way forward. I think in terms of having some assurance to the incoming ICB leaders about that we've got a credible plan, that we can make progress on, and that we can measure our success on is really key. And that's the work that Sandy and Jo have been taking forward in terms of refreshing the joint commissioning plan. So I think we see that as, as really good positive feedback, but we need to move on to actually getting that a formal agreement with the incoming ICB. I suspect that they will want to have appointed the new executive place director in place and the chief finance officer in place before they confirm to us that that is the way forward. So I think there are a few weeks to go before from an NHS side of things we can confirm that, but I would see that we've had really positive feedback on our proposals so far.
George?
That's really good to hear, thank you for that response, Jackie. So I appreciate the level of, you know, lack of clarity about the way the ICB doing things, particularly as you say, as we await the appointment of more figures within the local team of the ICB. Would we expect, in the way that we would sign off budget things at the council or CCG, that there'll be a public meeting at which any, you know, the final agreement for such a delegated budget will be made by the ICB? Would we expect that, or will there be other, would we anticipate other arrangements for those budgets at the ICB? Thank you.
I think it's a question of timing. If we get agreement ahead of the start date for the ICB, I would expect that when the for the ICB, I would expect that when the ICB sets out its constitution, its scheme of reservation and delegation, within those documents, it will describe how it's going to delegate to places. I think given the time scales we've got, that might not all be in place by the time which the ICB has been, is formed, in which case I would expect it to go to a future board meeting for formal sign off, yeah.
Thank you all. So any further questions then on the Section 75 and Better Care Fund budget? No, thank you, Jackie. I'm going to move us now on to item number eight, which is resilient community. So I can see, Sarah, you've joined us. Welcome. Are we expecting Nicola and Emma to join?
Yeah, apparently Nicola's in G21, waiting to come in.
Somebody want to bring them through?
Schlegel and retriever. I did text her to say we were in here, because it didn't say in the...
Okay, thank you, Jo. We'll take a pause for a couple of minutes, just while we wait for the others to join. Okay, thank you. So I just want to welcome Nicola Shearston, Emma Dickinson, and Sarah Burt. We've got you on the screen there. So welcome to the three of you. I'll take us then on to item eight, which is a presentation on resilient community. So who's going to start us off with that? You will. Okay. So we've got slides printed off. Everybody's got a copy of the slide deck in the pack. So can we just get you to press your button so that we can hear you as well? And just to remind new attendees at the meeting, we are being live streamed as well. Okay, ready to go?
Am I on now?
You are. Over to you.
Between the technology. I thought I'd bring my machine today. The last time I wrote some scribbling notes, but thank you, Lee. So thank you very much. Welcome. Thank you, Chair, for asking Nicola, myself and Sarah to come and talk and give an update on resilient communities today. So you've got some slides in the pack. I'm going to whip through them. It's an update as to where we are from the last time that we came. And so the slides are set out as in, what is resilient communities, just in case anybody's watching and hasn't heard of this item before, link issues with national and local policies, the evidence base for the model that we're going to test out, the high level plan, and a quick summary. And I'm keen to ask committee a steer on the outcomes, which are at the end of the slides. So why resilient communities? And I think it's a really important thing at the time as we come out of recovery and people start coming back to a type of life. There is clearly a group within the community who maybe are more reticent. And I think there's a wealth of national and international evidence that shows people with the lack of social networks and communal capabilities and resilience leads to poor outcomes in terms of employment, housing, wellbeing and physical health. Loneliness and a lack of voice and influence contributes to people accessing formal services earlier and for longer. And I know that Jenny, I don't think Jenny's here today, circulated a BMJ leader article around the committee at the end of last week. It was really nicely encapsulated in the back of that article around essentially, people who are lonely die sooner. You know, it's as starkly as that. So just moving forward on to the next slide, that little table just outlines where resilient contributes to national and local policy. And I think it was really heartening to see communities in the levelling up white paper recently. Two of the four points touched on community, restore a sense of community and empower local leaders. I'm not going to read them all. You know, you'd be very well cited on ambition eight that's in the health and wellbeing strategy. Everyone has the level of meaningful contact. It's within commitment one of the adult social care, and obviously it's in your own commitments of joint commissioning. And then I think it's just important to touch on, you know, the causes and impacts of loneliness and isolation, a very different, and for many different reasons, life stage. We're not talking about necessarily frail elderly people here. We're also talking about people when they become new parents. The evidence through COVID around teenagers being incredibly lonely has been very strong. I think there are not just life stages, but health stages and socio-economic reasons. And obviously, as the cost of living is increasing, there will be more difficult choices of family, which may actually make them more lonely and isolated. And then those impacts are many and varied, lack of informal support, loss of confidence, you know, people, as I've said, moving into services sooner and quicker. So the next slide touches on what is a resilient community. And I've probably posed this quite provocatively, because actually, it's not what is. A community is what the community defines. It is actually a question saying, you know, that actually, it should feel more like, we should be able to describe or have a feeling, but that community should be able to articulate, define, build what they want the community to be. But somewhere that is friendly, somewhere where people look out for each other, that might not be that you're in everybody else's homes, but actually you can have a friendly way. There's activities, people feel that they can contribute, have their voice heard. What it's definitely not is a service. But I think it's really important that anchor institutions such as libraries, GP, schools, contribute to what a resilient community is. And they have levers and can facilitate and support people to contribute and be part of a resilient community. So that's the background. I'm just going to touch on briefly the model that we're thinking of using. So we've looked around it, and there's the Public Health England Family of Community Centre approaches to base this on. So mouthful, that, sorry. But there's a nice table on the slides that show what the Family of Community Centre approaches. And I think, you know, going back to, this is not a service, but we know that there are a number of factors that contribute to a resilient community. And this test, this sort of model that we're going to take forward, will pull forward elements of that. I've included a logic model for anybody who wants to really look at the detail of sort of describing where we are now, what the future might describe, how you might measure that in terms of outputs, which I still feel quite difficult and challenging saying, because we're not talking about a service here. But I think you can clearly show some indicators that might describe a resilient community, and what those long-term outcomes and impacts would be. So I've talked a lot, but I get to the key part of this update. We've identified a small part of non recurrent funding to test this approach. We're having a good conversation with the local area committees within the council, the local area committee team, to identify a neighbourhood to test this approach in. There is some mapping in a current neighbourhood that feels like actually it'd be a good place to start. And I think it would enable us to bring forward this initiative, this sort of small part of money to test. I think it's worth stating, as I put in this slide, that this cannot be done to the community. And we've been very reticent in having a conversation with any community yet, until we've identified and got some money. And the money has just recently been approved. So we're at that stage now to really start to go and have that conversation with the community. And I think, as I state this update, I think we've just got to be mindful that a community may want to take this in a slightly different approach or direction. And that is really important, that we allow that to happen. So the update and the next slide, which talks about the plan, is still very high level, because I think it's important that we listen to the community and that they contribute and start to drag this forward themselves. So the next slide's just got four boxes to very loosely describe the high level plan. We're going to build on the mapping and the sense of working together. We want to fund a community development worker, but who and how that might happen will be very much done in discussion. Done sounds the wrong word. We will work alongside community organisations to understand what that might be, and some asset-based community development training for the local workforce in that area. So this next slide is just very much around the outcomes we're expecting to see. It'd be useful for committee to just touch on that when they respond. I think the key thing that we're, we will be understanding about the model in the first instance, I think what we're expecting to understand is, how has the model worked? And would it be replicable in other parts of the city? I think this is an action research, double learning, double loop learning approach. And what other forms of support might we need or approaches if we move to other parts of the city to do this? In terms of that longer term outcomes and what you would want to expect from the models, I suppose I've described that in the first instance to say, does this approach even work? And then what do we see within communities and people? And I think that key thing back to loneliness, are people making friends and networks? Do people feel more connected and have a sense of community? We would then, longer term, very much see greater interaction, possibly with governance and civic activities, consultations, meetings, voter turnout, stronger partnership mechanisms between the local workforce, and possibly, we would hope the long-term sustainability of this approach in a neighbourhood would maybe be sourcing another funding approach. So in summary, just to say, you know, just to outline what resilient communities is, we're going to test this approach within a small neighbourhood of the city with some small non recurrent funding, to understand how that model might play out. And they're starting to see some impact. And as I've said already, that it'd be really great to hear what people's comments are and contributions to those outcomes, unless Nicola and Sarah have got anything to add.
Thank you, Emma. Nicola, is there anything you want to add?
No.
No. Em and Sarah, is there anything that you want to add at this stage?
No, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So I'll open up the floor then to questions and feedback. But before I do that, Nicola, Sarah, Emma, are there any specific questions or any specific things that you are hoping to take away from the committee today?
I think I'd just be quite interested in what members' views of the outcomes, and if there was any stronger steer in those, that'd be really useful. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mark, please.
Yeah, thanks very much. Really helpful presentation. And right, I've got a number of things. First of all, I would just say, I feel duty bound to say this, that I was really pleased to see the Public Health England Family of Community Centres, of community centred approaches in there, not least because it was produced by my colleague, Professor Jane South at Leeds Beckett University. And I would just highlight that I'm sure Jane would be very happy to come down and talk more and share her experience there. So a plug for Leeds Beckett University. But the key bits are, I mean, at one level, I welcome this. I think anything that starts to try and get a greater understanding of communities and community resilience, I think, and how we can support that. And I like the fact, talking about, it's important that communities are involved in defining that. I suppose my concern is, is that as a city, although we've not always been the most, I think, had the most coherent approach, there's a tremendous amount of work that's happened in the city over the years. And my worry is, at a time of fundamental change in the NHS and financial pressures that are operating on the NHS and the government, that there are a number of things that we actually need to be getting on with now at a strategic level. So I want to understand, I suppose, the relationship between this pilot and some real sort of issues that we need to be addressing now. And we were talking about that, in fact, just before this item. So for example, Sheffield Council and the Public Health Department have had, probably getting on for decades of work around supporting the development of community health champions. We've had, I think, thousands of people, often from some of the most disadvantaged parts of the city, involved in those. And generally, we have struggled to systematically respond to that enthusiasm and strengths that those people who've been on those courses have then, you know, on their, in effect as assets, about how we can engage them as employees, as volunteers and so forth. And so I sort of have this worry that, for example, with community health champions, that's something that we need to be continuing and sustaining, and frankly, getting on with it now. And part of the solution to some of the challenges that we're facing around integration rests with those existing activities that are happening. I would also say, and I flagged up my interest at the beginning of the meeting, that I do think that community anchor organisations are fundamental to this. I take the point that that isn't a definition of resilient communities, but Sheffield has got, again, a really good track record with organisations from SOAR, Manor and Castle Development Trust, Healy City Farm, Shipshape, and Zest, and Darnell Wellbeing, of actually supporting the development of these important, long-term anchor points within communities that often involve people from communities as volunteers and on their management committees. And COVID, with the work that voluntary action Sheffield did, establishing, I'm sure with support from others, a set of community-based hubs across the city, which gravitated immediately to addressing issues around isolation and loneliness. That was, you know, it was, they did it naturally, because that's who the people in those committees are most concerned about. We've got really good evidence of community anchor-based approaches across the city using a variety of hubs that helped us as a city really respond to, and we did it very well compared to others, some of the challenges around COVID. So I'm just concerned that we've actually got a tremendous amount of good stuff in the city at the moment. And I know there's an anxiety that we, with all the pressures we're facing, that we don't capitalise and build on that now. So the last thing I'd say, and I'm a little bit confused about it, is there's also other stuff floating around in the ether, like the New Constellations work that is funded by the Communities Fund. And I don't know how that plays in and sort of its relationship. There's, you know, Communities levelling up white paper, as you've said, is seen as sort of an important issue, partly prompted by the experience of COVID. And there's something strategically about how we, in this committee and through the Health and Wellbeing Board, keep tabs and capitalise on what we're doing now, but also on all these sort of other things like New Constellations and other thinky tanky stuff that is floating around. That's it.
Mark, Jo's hand went up as you were speaking. So I wonder whether there may be a response to that, or it may be an addition to it. But I'll hand over to Jo.
Hi. Yes, I absolutely agree with, you know, with your comments. And I think, you know, what Emma's described here is one small part, really, and a way of learning. I think you're absolutely right. There are a raft of initiatives. And coming into this post, having worked years ago as Head of Community and Neighbourhood Renewal in Sheffield when there was Objective One many moons ago, you know, I've... Renewal in Sheffield, when there was Objective One many moons ago, you know, I've, I absolutely recognise the value that community organisations bring. And I think we have learnt a huge amount from Covid. I think that you're absolutely right, that there is a need for us to, to look at the whole picture and pull together all of these strands without suffocating the innovation and the endeavour and the enthusiasm. I think there is a need for us to, to do that. And I'm working with colleagues, I'm relatively new in this post, but sort of making all those links at the moment because communities will be part of my integrated commissioning brief. So I've talked as well with Sandy about some of the work we can start to do as integrated commissioners to understand how we can better support, stimulate, catalyse helpfully in this space and how we can best use, you know, obviously, limited resources to, 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 to get the most and to build the most social capital and not to get in the way of, of communities supporting themselves. So I just wanted to give that little bit of assurance really, that that's very much on, on our radar as, as, as integrated commissioning. And it's, it's a key part of, of my role in this, in this post is to work with the Director of Communities, Dawn Shaw, to make sure that we've got that overview picture really, and that we are being as effective as possible with, with, with the resources that, that we have. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I think, Mark, you wanted to respond to that.
Yeah, that's really helpful. I, I, you know, I commend the fact that the, that the paper is here and saying this is something that we're going to look at. I, but I think for me, this is, as we heard from our Director of Finance, from the CCG saying earlier, this committee has an oversight on a budget of, I think it was 400 million. It's a strategic city-wide approach. I think it is quite right that we receive the, have received the report. And as I say, it's generated, you know, but, but I think it highlights also that this committee, I think, needs to have a broader frame that says, these are some of the challenges. And also, these are some of the opportunities that Sheffield has already and we want to maximise that. And I, I suppose what I'm flagging up is that something that actually, that we see as an important, something that comes to our agenda at a future meeting that sets that out, I think is very important. And then we can see where this piece of work fits within that.
Thank you. And do you want to come back on that, Emma, and then I'll take, take some further points?
Is my microphone still on? So just to say, Mark, absolutely agree. And it's probably useful for you to understand, because you probably, there's no reason that you should, but on behalf as George as the Cabinet Member and Nicola and Sarah as the senior responsible officers, I actually commission some of the community anchors to deliver people keeping well, of which part of that portfolio is still the Community Health Champions. So absolutely, it's incredibly close to my heart as, as the Commissioner. And I have actually attended the Covid hubs meeting essentially mostly every week since the start of Covid. So very much work alongside the voluntary sector. I think it's important, we have a good feel for the neighbourhood. At, at the moment, we don't want to, it, it's not wholly decided, but one of the reasons the neighbourhood is probably being picked is that the lack of infrastructure and that community anchor, it's something that Nicola and Sarah and I have talked strongly about as a place to start, is actually somewhere where it lacks some of what you were describing. And, and for that very reason that we want to test it out in that part, because there, because there isn't those other things that you were talking about actually. So I, I think we recognise that actually if this were to be rolled out across the city, there would have to be different approaches and work alongside community anchors, very important, because they are a key part of how this would work in other neighbourhoods.
Thank you. Emma, Mark, as I've given some assurance that we're not reinventing the wheel and there will be a continuation of building on some of the good work that's happened already. Yeah, lovely. Thank you, Emma. I'm going to take a point from Sandy and then from Kate, please.
Thank you. And thank you for the three of you for the presentation and the work that you've, you've done on this. This programme's very much in the joint commissioning plan. And just touching on your points about what outcomes, I think the presentation really does state what the strategic outcomes are for the programme itself. But what I would like to ask is that the outcomes in terms of what you're measuring is linked to the outcomes dashboard that we're doing, which underpins the whole of the joint commissioning plan. In terms of that, it looks at population health management data. So I think you've already said about what you know the impact of loneliness does on people's lives. So you already know what the population health perspective is, the service level indicators in terms of what services are in that, putting in place in order to drive this forward. And then service user engagement, feedback and experience in terms of, are we having the right impact? So we look at those three areas to triangulate that information to see if the programme's having the impact of what we expected it to. So there is a plea that that, whatever we decide of the outcomes or outputs from the programme, they are aligned to that dashboard. But I think it does clearly state what the strategic elements are within that. And just picking up on Mark's point about this committee and what we're here to do, I think Kate's point earlier about learning from the lessons, last year was our first joint commissioning plan. And we've learnt a lot in terms of what we want to monitor, measure and focus on, including the challenges that we face, where the gaps are, but also are we having the right impact, which is why the outcomes framework and the steering board has been established with the report. So all the programmes that do come here, which outline from the joint commissioning plan, and basically, we will have that going forward in terms of the committee, all of them will have those aligned outcomes to the dashboard. So it's just joining everything up which then aligns to the health and wellbeing, but absolutely in terms of recognising that and bringing that to this space going forward.
Thank you. Kate, please.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. Obviously, I mean, this sort of approach is very close, close to my heart, but I think we've got to sort of balance it a bit with realism, to be honest. I'd be very anxious if this was just another project. And, and, and that's the key thing for me, that it has to be embedded in the mainstream, that come back to my early comments about this. And, and Mark was talking about a framework, that's good. I like all the stuff that's in here, but just a few comments. Firstly, the stuff that Mark was talking about is very, very patchy, to be honest. I haven't, I can't remember the last time I heard of, saw, heard a, a, a Community Health Champion, to be honest. And, and I'm a councillor in a, an area with quite high levels of, of, of health inequalities and so on as well. So I just think we have, we need a holistic approach, we have to be realistic about the timescale. And to be honest, Sandy, with all those aspirations you've got about impact and health outcomes, those take a long time to, to deliver. And one little project's not going to do that in a few years. So timescale's really important, I think we need to set timescale. And I like the, I always like the log frame approach because it can be quite realistic in terms of your progress in a systematic way. And one of the things I'd like to see in the outcomes is something about response of the statutory services, that, that the groups themselves are being listened to. And, and it's not just about top-down, sorry, bottom-up, it's also about how, how we respond to that and how we listen. And so I think a bit of work needs to be done around that in terms of, you know, the, the willingness of, of, of key stakeholders in communities to listen to and, and to respond to the stuff that's actually coming out. And, and maybe, I mean, I'm, I'm not a big fan of lax at the moment because it's very early days, but something about, you know, you know, health and, and social care and all of that stuff, having, having some sort of role within what the lax do in the, in the future would be quite a good place to locate it. So I really think we have to locate it in some sort of framework for it to have an impact. We don't want to kill it with all of our expectations and we have to be realistic and nurture it and so on. But I do agree with, with Mark that we have to build on anything else that's there in the community, rather than just parachuting an additional dimension. So I really would like this to be successful. I'd like it actually to go throughout the city, but I think we need to be very, we, we need to nurture it and, and we need to locate it rather than just expect one little project to change the world, although I hope it does. But thanks for the work on that.
Thank you, Kate. I think you've set the expectation there, haven't you, that it's going to change the world? Okay, can I bring George in, please? We do have to be ambitious. George, please.
Thank you, Jen, and thank you, Emma, for the presentation. First, I really agree with both what Mark said, but also what Kate's just said. I'm excited about this. I'm also nervous. I think firstly, if you, I mean, going through in terms of the presentation, obviously, in terms of the ultimate aims, you know, I'm completely on board with those. It's something that, you know, in expanding people keeping well and things we've done over recent years, it, you know, we've been trying to go in this direction, but this is an opportunity in a smaller area to hopefully move that action further on. The thing that concerns me, I guess, is looking at how we will measure outcomes. Obviously, you said quite a bit about, you know, kind of outcomes we'd like to see and some interesting stuff here, but in terms of measuring those, I'll be absolutely honest, I have kind of two conflicting thoughts. Firstly, we don't want to tie anything down to trying to measure really many, many really hard outcomes that won't reflect the kind of community development we, we want to see. So that is obviously on one side, but on the other side, if we can't measure anything that feels tangible, then it's going to be very difficult to either, you know, apply for the, you know, the further funding, talk about here, or, or, or to make internal arguments about continuing the work. So I'm, I'm wondering whether you thought much about using what I would describe as proxy measures to try and capture some very measurable things that we might say, well, it's a question for many of us really, we, we can either say have to be achieved or, or else we would very much like to be achieved, in order to give the results of this project a really firm underlining which will help to mean that we can expand and, and, and progress this further. And I, I wonder if you thought about that and what some of those measures might be? And just furthermore, the, in, in terms of the, the pace and scale of this, in terms of, I'm ensuring that Kate said about maybe, you know, not, not, not just doing another project, how, you know, how quickly do you feel we have to move on with finding out what we need to find out in order to apply for these other funds or to, and to try and mainstream this project and try and keep it going? Is that something that we'll have to start to do very, very quickly after this is launched? Or do you feel that there's, that, that, there's a bit more time to really test and retest as part of the project? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that really, this is why Emma raised about the outcomes being a particular point for discussion today, because I think that is the challenge for this. And I think there is a lot of evidence, if you look at all the national literature and all the research, there's a lot of evidence there that these approaches work. But what we're trying to do within this as well is establish what's the right approach within a community in Sheffield? And is that the approach that we can roll out across the city? Or are elements of that what we can roll out? Because we recognise that all the neighbourhoods in the city are very different. So I think it is a very fine balance of not over-expecting in one community with one small pot of funding and then not having the confidence to go forward. So I think some of the measures and some of the outcomes that we're looking for will in the first instance have to be very low-key, very much about just seeing subtle changes within a community that's heading us in the right direction. Because I think the other challenge we have in this space is the timeframe, because very much in this, again, in this way of working, you would expect a very long timeframe of seeing some change and some difference and some outcomes. So I think some of the overarching outcomes can be our long-term expectation, but what we'll have to set is some very short-term, what would we want to see subtly starting to change, which is in a way why Emma described it a little bit of an action research, what are those subtle changes we'll want to see that give us the confidence it's heading in the right direction whilst we then wait for some of the longer-term outcomes? And then some level of comparison of that neighbourhood to other neighbourhoods in the country, in the city, to say, is that something which we could then replicate elsewhere? Or do we need to take a different approach with the rights and principles underlying it? So I think, I don't think it's fair to say we're sat here with a set of outcomes that we absolutely think are the right ones. I think this is what needs to evolve and will probably evolve more once the community's been decided.
Thank you, Nicola, for that. Just one reflection actually on the outcomes. I think when, when we look at the, the logic model, the outcomes, I think, are fairly clear. And those, those are outcomes we know have a meaningful impact within those communities from the evidence base. I think my perspective on there is we've got some outputs next to it. And I would, would quite like to see some stronger links between those outputs in terms of how do they then support the outcomes? So we've, we've got a number of them down there, but I, I'm not clear how I would explain that those outputs would support the outcomes to, to somebody in a community. So I think that, that's the bit really is to draw those out. I take George's point there, I can't remember the exact term you used, but if, if I was describing a medical trial, we might describe a surrogate measure. And so it's not, it's not the impact and it's not the outcome you're measuring, but it's a set of outputs that you're measuring that we know definitely from other community research and so on is, is supporting that. So I, I think that action research is very much the correct approach, but I'd just like to see a stronger link between the two.
I suppose that the, the final point on some of that is, there is, and Mark's probably better able to talk about this, but there is an approach in evaluation of using stories and stories layering over and the themes that come out of stories then give quantitative evidence forward. So you use qualitative evidence that builds the quantitative. And it might be that actually for a period of time, that there are multiple stories that then start to give you confidence that this is having an impact. Because I think Kate was incredibly nuanced in that thought of that this is not going to change the world and actually is going to probably work with a really small number of people. So not suggesting it's going to be statistically representative, but actually it's how do we use those stories as proxies of bigger outcomes if we were to continue this with more funding and for a longer period of time?
So thank you. I'm going to take a point from Lee and then a final point from Jo, if I may.
Thank you. I've been sitting here getting more and more excited and, and really trying to hold myself in. I really welcome Kate and George and Mark's points, but I think this can change the world. This is absolutely the right way that we should be going. And I suppose my, I'm realistic as well, it's not going to change the world overnight. But I think the, the reason it could be different this time is because of the timing. And I think there's a lot of understanding that the way that we do health or social care is not enough and is not working. And actually, through, through lots of other reasons, it's actually increasing inequality. And, and doing things differently is definitely gaining a lot of traction. I think my challenge to the idea that this is a test, I just want to supportively challenge that because I think, as, as you say, Nicola, the evidence is out there, we know that this works, we don't need to test it. What we need to do is, is work out how it works within a given community because that, the principles are the same, but how, what that actually looks like will be unique to whichever community that you're serving. And, and I, I really welcome the, the fact that this is not prescriptive and this is not about doing to, this is about doing with, and that's, that's absolutely the way forward. I think the reason the timing's important is because with the development of the PCNs and, and the money that's come into PCNs to support allied workers such as pharmacists and AMPs and all the rest, actually those, those professions aren't out there. And the PCNs are now increasingly thinking about using the, the money to support community-based workers because we understand that that is what ultimately makes a difference to people's health. So we're, I think traditionally, medicine in particular is, has been a very, quite cast iron system, a bit unwieldy, all about pathogenesis, so treating illness. And, and increasingly now, the understanding is actually we're about salutogenesis, which is about from And increasingly now, the understanding is actually we're about salutogenesis, which is about promoting health. And that's not, and the health, what happens in, say, the GP surgery and what happens in the community are not separate things. They are absolutely intertwined and embedded and can't be separate. And I think that understanding, it makes me think about climate change. You know, we've known about climate change since the 1970s, well, before the 1970s. I've known about it since the 1970s. And sudden, you know, we go, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. But actually, we've carried on doing what we're doing and made it worse. And that's a slightly melodramatic connection. But actually, it feels to me very, very similar. We understand about inequalities and the way that we do health. But we've carried on doing what doesn't work, you know. And I think the times are changing. And I think Covid has been part of that as well. And, you know, it's really brought to light inequalities and different ways of working on what keeps people well. But also the pressures on social and health systems makes us understand we can't, that what we're doing isn't working. So the timing is really important. In terms of outcomes, also, just to go back to how we might see this working, I think it's really, really important to get your anchor organisations absolutely part of this. So not, it's not an add on to what, you know, it's got, so, you know, I think there's conversations to be had about that, about how that looks in the community you might trial this in. In terms of outcomes, I again would challenge the, whether we need to wait a long time to see a benefit. Because if you look at what happens in Fleetwood, if you look at what happened in Manchester, you know, within 12, 24 months, they were seeing differences in GP attendance, in A and E attendance. Now, that doesn't translate to long term health benefits. But again, it's a bit of a marker that something's going right there. So it might not take as long as we think. But I absolutely agree that we've got to look to proxy markers. And if we're thinking that actually what keeps people well is a sense of control and connection and the confidence that that brings, can we be really radical and actually say, well, we might not know what the outcomes are? So actually, let's ask the community for their outcomes, because that's part of control and confidence and all the rest. So I would put in a plea for that as well. But I think, you know, the scientists didn't even go, you can actually measure improvements, because you've got a baseline now in terms of community groups, what the litter looks like, you know, connections that people have. And you could just look for an improvement and not put a figure on that, but just look to see. So that, I'll stop. I could, I would love to talk about this all afternoon, but I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee. I was just reflecting on a very similar point as you were discussing there. I think we do need to be flexible with some of the outcomes, because the communities themselves need to co-produce those. Absolutely got to be central to this. Okay, I'll take a final point from Jo and then we'll wrap this item up.
Yes, it was just actually really, you know, I just want to sort of echo that point about the co-production here and how that sets the tone a little as well, doesn't it, to see what matters to people? I think the other thing here to think about in terms of outcomes is, as Emma said, I see this as an action learning process, where we learn with and alongside the community about what works and what doesn't work. So what we might find is, you know, quite a lot of what doesn't work for people. And that might, one of the key outcomes might be learning for statutory services, as we discussed earlier. Actually, that the way that, you know, they don't, they work doesn't listen to their community or that it seems to listen, but the things don't change. So I actually think this ought to be, you know, not just about the outcomes for people. It will also be about what we need to learn about ourselves and other statutory services and also the voluntary sector and what works. So I think for me, that will be, that will be a huge outcome. You know, if we learn about what doesn't work and we have to go away and have a good hard think, you know, about what that means, then actually this might be a small project. But the potential for that to ripple out in terms of the way we think about service delivery might be, you know, actually have quite significant impact. So I think there's something there about capturing the learning that we're doing as well as the outcomes and outputs.
Thank you, Jo. So can I check Emma, Nicola and Sarah? Have you, have you had enough conversation today to have something to go away with, to progress this? Yeah, okay. And just picking up on Lee's point, who, self admission though, they could probably talk all afternoon about this. I'm sure members of the committee, including Lee, would be happy to pick up further input outside of the committee if we can. Okay, thank you all for joining us. Thank you for the presentation. And I guess we look forward at some point to coming back and hear how it's changed the world. Okay, thank you. So I'm now going to take us on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Joint Commissioning Intentions for 2021/22 Highlight Report. That has got my name next to it, but I believe it's actually your item, Sandy. Is that correct?
Happy to pick it up, Chair. The report's just for information for noting by the committee. It's outlining the progress that's been made in the priority areas that are set within the plan. It is my intention, as I've said, about learning from the first plan that we had in 2021/22. And for the 2022/23 plan, we are going to introduce an update and highlight report that has timescales, what our milestones are in the year, as well as an understanding of the outcomes, outputs that we've identified through the programmes. So this one in particular is just looking at the actions that we've undertaken through the different programmes. Draw out a couple of examples. So the joint preparation between the council and the CCG in relation to the Ofsted inspection. So we're currently awaiting the report on that. And that was in relation to children's and families, the resilient communities. We've just had a detailed presentation on in terms of the update. The mental health crisis safe space has been out for tender and will be in place from April 22 alongside Crisis Cafe and Crisis Buddy tenders, which will also be implemented from April 22. And a new children and young person 24 hour helpline is in place with an online counselling platform, which has been commissioned. So what this report does is just to highlight the actions that have been undertaken through these programmes. But what will be provided to the committee following the start of 2022/23 is a more detailed plan on timescales and what to expect in terms of deliverables. So like I said, it's just for noting and for information for today's meeting.
Thank you, Sandy. So just before I open up to the floor for any comments or questions, I may just check in with Kate, if I may. Just picking up on the point in an earlier conversation just around some of the innovations that have resulted from our joint commissioning space. I just wondered, Sandy, whether we could bring a sort of a highlight report in future that just really draws out some of the innovations, some of the new ways of working and some of the learning that we've taken from that. Kate, would that be something that you would support in the future?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I won't be here, but I do support it. And just to bear in mind, I was actually talking about some of the use of the temporary funding. It wasn't a sort of massive challenge. But I do think that's a good idea, because it just highlights that what we're doing isn't just business as usual. I think that's the point really I would like to make. And that we're adding value by working together on stuff. I think that's the key bit, actually, isn't it? That we're not in silos and that we've got a bit of synergy. I know there's a lot of sort of management speak in there, but the point is, are we making a difference? Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So any comments? George, please.
Thank you. I'll just follow up with this, right, Chair, thanks, Sandy, on yours and what Kate said. I actually do think that, and I'm not going to pick out any individual point here, because I'm sure we could say there's probably interest and value to all of these. But actually, whether as an update, it might be more helpful to do slightly more detail about slightly less, slightly less points where we feel that, you know, the difference is made or actually the difference could be and should be made or attention of the committee would be warranted. Being that we should think of it in a sense that some things, we have to be assured, are being well looked after by officers of the committee, as I'm sure they are. And others might, you know, over the next year and as the committee changes, you know, be deserving of that, a little bit more attention and be brought more individually to the committee's eye. So I do think a slight development of this kind of report would be really welcome, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further points that anybody wants to make? No, thank you, Sandy, for, I'm not quite sure how we say it, the detailed report, but could do with some more detail in certain areas. But no, I agree with George's point there. There are some bits that we probably want a bit of a deeper dive into from time to time. And I know we do bring some of those items for deep dives into our development sessions. But it would be nice to see that in the report moving forward. And particularly now that we're kind of freed from some of our shackles of how we meet. Certainly, I would anticipate we'll be having more meetings in public as we go on. I think these are important things for us to be receiving updates from in that public space. Okay, any other business that anybody wishes to bring up at this meeting? Mark, please.
You might, I just wanted, you might already be intending to do this, Chair. Just recognising the contribution that Jenny Milner's made to your ongoing to do.
Thank you. Any other business that anybody else wishes to bring up? Okay, so yes, we'd like to, there's probably two important people that we just want to recognise at today's meeting. So firstly, Jenny Milner. So Jenny has been with us for a number of years, working specifically around our Better Care Fund and the development of our Section 75 agreement between local authority and CCG. I think Jenny has been one of those people that's quite instrumental in being able to translate between the two of us, being able to kind of help us bring that common agenda together. So I think everybody here would really like to thank Jenny for her contributions over the last few years and wish her well as she goes on to her new role in NHS England. So Jenny, if you're watching us, that's a big thank you. If not, I'm sure we will pass that on. And then the second point is just to recognise that the accountable officer from Sheffield CCG finishes this week. So again, I think the committee would like to thank Lesley Smith and the support she's given us over the last couple of years in really progressing the joint commissioning agenda. So again, not sure Lesley will be watching, but if you are, a big thank you from both organisations from this committee. Okay, our next meeting is scheduled to be in public on Monday, the 27th of June at 10am. And I look forward to seeing everybody then. Thank you.